Everyone, it's five thirty P M on August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. I'd now like to call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Father God, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for this opportunity to, to come together to discuss the plans and things that are necessary to continue to move this city forward. Father, we ask that you please guide us, give us your wisdom, and then continue to watch over us as we grow, and ask we try to find our best way to glorify you in all that we do. Jesus name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll move on to item three, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, there are no names on the citizen comments signing sheet. If there is anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward. Okay? If there is no one, then I will close citizen comments and move into the budget workshop to discuss proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget. Mr. Coest.
Good evening, mayor, council, folkses. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. The council, mayor, you know, I gave y'all your proposed budget last week. Hopefully you had a chance to go through it. So we're gonna hit some of the high points of it and really kind of have a two-part discussion tonight. And again, as I go through this, keep in mind, it is kind of a high look at it, if you will, and it's some, some of the things you may already know, some things you may not know. Feel free to ask questions or comments or any of those kind of things. So some of this in, in the beginning is, uh, some of the things that we're gonna review, have reviewed in the past, but kind of wanna let everybody know where we are. And also, I'll say, as I am the main speaker, if I get, uh, need to stop and get some water, I certainly will. But if I go too fast or go slow, let me know. So first of all, you know, the budget, uh, it's not an exact science of those figures that you have in there, especially the revenue. Those are projections, estimates, all those good things. So it's kind of a guesstimate what we, we sit and discuss, try to look at the past trends as we move forward. You know, hopefully nothing crazy, and when we see nothing crazy today's world, we know something crazy is gonna happen, but hopefully we move forward with, with some good projections. And, you know, typically, we always try to budget conservatively, because we, um, like I said, we just don't know what's gonna happen in the future. But all those in, in your budget, you're gonna have revenue, expenditure, and reserves. Remember, revenue, expenditure, reserves, and all these different funds that are in your book. The two biggest ones that, that we concern ourselves with is the general fund that has the most flexibility, and then the water and sewer fund. The water and sewer fund is an enterprise fund, and so the, the revenue that we get for it can only be spent in water and sewer. But if you would certainly like to have a, a offline discussion about in these other funds, we can do that. So, again, remind you that on each of those funds, revenues, expenditures, and reserves. So, just real quickly, we, we've talked about some of this in, in the past. How do we get revenue? The big one is the ad valorem tax, and the big, and that's mainly the property tax, then our industrial district contracts, sales tax. Those are the, the three biggest ones, except for water and sewer, where we charge. We charge for those, and that's where we get those funds. But there are some other ways that we get revenue. Some of those, you know, we say that hotel occupancy tax can only be spent a certain way. Now, I will like to point out, the last, uh, recently, the last couple of years, two of our I D C partners have challenged their valuations, and they have won. If you remember just recently, uh, this summer, I pointed out that line of the last stomers, they won, and we actually had to write, refund them a check for, for two years, a little over three hundred thousand dollars, and that's coming straight out of the reserve fund. And then we had one two years ago, the one successfully won their, uh, you know, their appraised value, protested that, and they won nothing, not to that extreme. For some reason, I'm thinking like thirty thousand dollars, somewhere in there. But what that's, what that, uh, kind of that trend is, is that the total revenue from those I D C contracts has decreased. Talked a couple of my counterparts, I saw in the paper, Port Neches is having a similar thing, and I know West Orange had to refund some of, one of their I D C contracts. Again, there's the numbers for those proposed revenue, the different funds. Again, you can see the general fund is the biggest one. I spent a lot of time on that. I wanna make sure Dave can't take a good picture as I'm going through the slides there, Mr. Rogers. But let's talk about the general fund a little bit, because that's the biggest one. So there's our, our pie chart, and what I like about this one, uh, again, besides the fact that it shows, you know, that, again, the three major revenue streams of I D C contracts, property tax, and sales tax, but to me, if we see that sales tax, it really hammers home that if, if we shop orange more, you know, the more we shop orange, the more sales tax we get, so theoretically, we can make that property tax slice a little smaller. And again, there's just the numbers reflective of that pie chart. All right? Now, again, this is kind of divvied up on where those expenditures, remember, we talked about revenue, go to expenditures, and again, as we talked about this, this summer, where personnel, that's almost sixteen million dollars, that's our biggest expense is, is for the employees, because we provide services. Now, I'll talk about capital outlay, the highlights, and the general fund. These are just the highlights, so kind of the big things. I will tell you, early, you know, a couple of months ago, uh, in the spring, we put out to all the department heads, and they're here, and, and so they'll give me the evil eyes, we go through some of this, you know, I said, tell me what you need, but also tell me what you want. Not only do we need to know what you want this year, but kind of, we can't do it all, but we kind of need to know what's coming in the future, what do we need to start working towards. So nobody gets everything, you know how that is, but we try to give something to everybody. And for example, like the police vehicles, I wanna point out now, you know, we're, we're trying to buy some, we're gonna try to lease some, but every year, they need vehicles, patrol vehicles especially. Currently, we have eleven in the fleet. The chief would really like to have twelve, but again, next year, you should see, you know, two, three, four. The year after that, you may say, man, we're buying patrol vehicles every year, because what we don't want is one year to come up here and say, I need ten patrol vehicles. Why? Because we had to kick that can down the road, and now we're all kind of saying, man, we, we, we should have bought a few every time.
Well, I like that part, too, because this year, you have a chip issue. Next year, you may have a completely can't find a vehicle issue. So if we have a chance to get that, we need to make sure we get it.
I agree. And again, this is in your book, but certainly just kind of hit the highlights, kind of want to show, uh, where, you know, every department's get a little something. Now, one thing that's not in here is any of the leased vehicles, especially some of those that we have four- or five-year, uh, long leases on, so. Again, we're trying to do some things, some things we have to do, some things we want to do. One of the things that we want, I say we need to do, and we want to do is provide generators to our buildings so that we can service the citizens and that our folks are able to work as we have these hurricanes that we had the last couple of years or several years. And then some things, um, you know, again, we're just always trying to improve what we have, whether through improvement or just as things start to wear and tear. And again, not gonna read all of this, but again, we try to do a variety of things, but I mean, you'll see like on that great all, and some of this stuff's expensive. But to provide the services to the citizens for which they pay taxes, you know, we have to buy equipment. You know, I like to point out as, uh, and kind of wanna echo what the mayor is saying about finish what we started, finish what we started. You know, a couple of years ago, we kind of started a journey to update and upgrade Lions Den Park. You know, the, the playground equipment is out there, I think that's something we can really be proud of. Jim Wolf and his department are finishing up that pavilion, so, you know, the next step would be resurfacing the parking lot out at Lions Den Park. So hopefully, we get that done, and I mean, that'd be a very nice park that we, we can say, man, we're done, so now we can kind of move on to something else. So anyway, trying to, trying to put a little bit of love as many places as we can, but again, something like Lions Den Park, let's finish that up and move on. So in all that, about six hundred fifty-five thousand dollars in capital outlay, okay? So again, I'm gonna tell you that the folks are sitting behind me, the department heads are sitting behind me, they, they requested many more things than that, we can't do it all, just like at our house and our personal budgets. You know, we want all this, all these things. We just gotta kind of prior, prioritize what do we need, what has to be done versus, you know, what do we want to improve our city, to improve our department? So we gotta kind of pick and choose and see what we can afford. And I would say in the proposed budget, we do have a budget that we can move forward with. A few projects, though, that are continuing on from two thousand twenty-one, the recreation center, the Northway Park Track, that should be kicking off to the paving, that track should be kicking off pretty soon, and the recreation center is underway. Unfortunately, with some of the rains, that we're, I think we're looking at probably spring for that to be done. Currently, the Riverside Pavilion, that drainage and sidewalk, kind of looking around Labor Day, you know, every time I, I say Labor Day, uh, it seems like it starts to rain. And then also, I mentioned previously, the pavilion at Lions Den Park, so.
Don't make your day.
Yeah, so, anyway, hopefully, we'll get those things completed here relatively quickly in the recreation center early next year. Now, the reserve fund, you know, last year when I came, did the first one, I said, I'd like to have fifty percent of our operating, uh, budget, if you will, as a reserve, that amount as a reserve. So if something would happen, you know, a hurricane Laura followed by Hurricane Delta, what if it had hit us instead of Lake Charles, winter freeze, we have six months operating reserve. And I say with the twelve million dollars we have that, we have a little bit set aside for our debt. We do have about one point seven unassigned, and we're gonna talk some more about that. And that, that line item says capital outlay. That'd be something to me where if we had a project in mind, again, and I'm just throwing something out there, so don't hold me to it, but say we wanna do a street project, to do a bunch of the street resurfacing like we did just a couple of years ago, and we said, we wanna save two million dollars, would we take a couple of years if y'all decided to do it, put it in that line item, say, why do we have so much there? Well, that's for a project. Here's the project, or projects for which we're saving that money. So now we're gonna go to the water and sewer fund. Remember, water and sewer gets the money, gets their revenue from what we charge people. And remember, the city of Orange cannot grow if we don't have good water and sewer. To, to make it grow, whether it's geographically, we need to extend service out to those areas, or some of the older parts of town, we've got to keep them going. You know, this, some areas of this city have been around, well, eighteen thirty-six, I don't know when they started watering sewer, but we easily say some of this stuff is probably World War Two, and when it breaks, it's expensive. But again, the revenue for the water and sewer fund, what we project we will get next year is eight million dollars. Estimated for two thousand twenty-one is seven point six, but if you go back to two thousand eighteen, and I mentioned this to y'all before, the revenue for the water and sewer fund has been going down. Now, you know, we gotta do something about it, so I'm not up here just to say, we have a problem, what are we gonna do? You know, unfortunately, as I mentioned last year, we're gonna have to go up on the water and sewer, so, but we have a four-year plan for that. What we propose, and that is in the budget that you have in front of you, that in two thousand twenty-two, that we have a four percent rate increase for water and sewer, and then the following three years, we have a two percent rate increase each of those years. So obviously, at the end of that four-year period, it went up ten percent. But keep in mind, we have not gone up since two thousand fourteen. I'll say, too, last year, um, one of the council members said, what, what else can we do besides just raising the rate? So what we also have in the budget, there's an inter-fund transfer from the water and sewer fund to the general fund. That is a payment for all of us and all those things that are paid out of the general fund, but also kind of assists the water and sewer fund. You know, Jim Wolf's time, some of his people's time, the finance, you know, y'all's time, all of those. So we reduce that inter-fund transfer to try to help build up that water and sewer fund. And I'm gonna say here, well, we'll talk about their reserve fund in just a second. Here's some of the expenditures for the water and sewer fund. Again, obviously, it's not, the numbers are not as great as the general fund, because again, we don't do as much. But here, here's some, again, the highlights of the capital outlay. Every year, you will see pumps and control panels at lift stations, because again, just kind of like I'd mentioned earlier about the patrol cars, we're always trying to do it, always trying to do it. And so there's always a big number. And again, you'll see, again, part of that, we wanna get generators on that Burton Street building, so when something happens, those guys can, can still stay up and running. And also, you know, I'll point out, all those are big numbers, they are, because again, when something breaks in water and sewer, it's expensive. Now, again, did we get everything we need for water and sewer? Certainly not. I don't think there's any way we could afford to get everything they need. But we go to the reserve fund. So again, their operating reserve currently is two point seven. All right, and then let me go to here, where my goal of that fifty percent is three point three, and so we, we've done better this year. So we're, we're moving towards that goal. We're still a little short, but we're doing better. If y'all recall, those of you who were here last year, I said, we're short, we need to, we need to do something, so we're making strides. We're doing well, or better. Then again, some big picture stuff for the, for the proposed budget as it is, uh, across-the-board raise of one percent, the health insurance costs have increased nine percent. Now, in that, the city is going to absorb the majority of that, and keep in mind that the, for the city employee, the city pays one hundred percent, and there's three levels of deductibles, three thousand, two thousand, and one thousand. We pay, we'd be in the city. For an employee, pay a hundred percent at the three thousand dollar level. If an employee wants to buy that down, they pay a little additional on that. Now, also, on the dependent coverage, so if there's, besides employee only, there can be an employee with a spouse, an employee with kids, or an employee with family. And again, three thousand dollar level, two thousand dollar level, one thousand dollar level, but the city pays ninety percent of that dependent coverage, therefore, the employee pays ten, and again, if they want to buy that down, they'd have to pay a little bit more of that. Some other budget highlights, some may say it's lowlights, but no new staff positions in the general fund. Now, we will see some new faces next year, because the rec center, obviously, we have to staff that, but that has been in the budget. We are adding one utility worker in water and sewer. They wanted two, but we could just afford one, and then we will have one reclassification of one employee. Note for the, for the, uh, tax rate, we will have a public hearing on the tax rate. I know it was gonna be four meetings in a row, but that'll be Tuesday, August thirty-first at five thirty, it's gonna be here. Remember, last week, y'all approved that the tax rate will be no higher than the current rate, which is eight zero five nine zero, so we cannot go above that to adopt a tax rate. So, I said this last week, we said it last year, we said it, we'll say it in the future, if we do not change our tax rate from what it is, and again, I'd propose that we do not, that there still will be more property tax brought in in total, and so it will say in the paper, we are raising taxes. That we have, that's what we have to say, we're required to say that, but we are keeping the tax rate the same. So before, on that portion of the proposed budget, if there'll be any questions, comments, concerns, anything you wanna cuss or discuss before we move on? All right. So, I got, I mentioned a second ago on our reserve fund, so I got a plan, three-year plan, starting with this coming up. This is not in the budget, because again, the staff and I are tasked with presenting y'all a budget using our projected revenue for reject, or expected expenses, okay? I never feel like I'm gonna sit there and dip into the reserve fund, expenses, revenue, and we're about, as I put for this year in the budget message, as opposed to maybe some years in the past, I've said, we're, I think it's one thirty-six, one hundred thirty-six thousand dollars, we're a little short. Now, keep in mind, we still have a couple of months of sales tax that's gonna come in. I'm very comfortable at that level, you know, to, to get to one that says zero, that, you know, it's gonna be up a little bit down, but that, that, that's relatively a balanced budget. I don't have concerns about that. But to truly dip into the reserve fund, no. But, let me show this again. Again, we got the twelve million dollars, we got some set aside for our debt, we got about one point seven million above that fifty percent, okay? So I wanna talk about that. So I got a three-year plan, if y'all are agreeable. That's, this is what I'm pitching. So, again, the reserve fund is for when bad things happen to us. What kind of bad things can happen? Since I've been here, have been a lot of bad things that happened in this general area. We can just think in the past, say, year, with two named hurricanes hit our, our neighbor in Lake Charles. Covid is spiking again, we've had that, I don't know how many months we've had that, a year and a half, we just went through this historic winter freeze, seemed like we've had our fill, that maybe it's time for someone else, I mean, who knows? I, I don't know, but again, that's why I'm very, uh, a big proponent of that fifty percent of operating funds reserved in the, in the reserve fund. Fortunately, we have a little bit more than that, but in the cap, so we have one-time money, one-time money, I'm suggesting with that one-time money, we make one-time purchases, go out and just flat buy it. And so what, what is that? That's some of that capital outlay. So again, what I'm gonna propose in just a minute is that we buy some capital outlay, and again, so in the next three years, that's what we do, buy some capital outlay out of that reserve fund as we move through our budgets. And again, if something even crazier happens than has been happening to us in the past two years, we can adjust that plan, whether accelerate it or decelerate it. But something as simple as, there's that one point seven, so I, I'm gonna recommend this year, we spend about seven hundred thousand on capital outlay, and two thousand twenty-three, half a million, two thousand twenty-four, half a million. And if y'all are agreeable to this, that what we'll do in two thousand twenty-three, we'll identify what capital outlay we're buying using that reserve funds. So what would we, you know, my first thought is, as we know, if you drive by, um, the Ford place, the Toyota place, you know, anywhere here in town, by, the availability of cars is a big challenge. I would like to purchase six patrol vehicles as soon as we can. One is at, you know, uh, Major Robinson, who was here last week, he thinks he can get six of the Tahoe patrol vehicles in November. Whether we do or don't, because again, that's a few months away, but I recommend we buy six Tahoe patrol vehicles in November. And they requested five, they really want more, you know, everybody wants more, but we'll, we'll get six, so that's close to a quarter of a million dollars right there. And then this is just straight capital outlay out of that proposed budget. So again, I just look in, there's things that we have already identified, we start pulling those out of the budget, so again, I won't really read all these again for you, but it's just boom, till we get to about seven hundred thousand dollars. So that's step one. So we just buy out of the reserve fund, capital outlay. So then what? Well, if we buy multiple capital outlay items, that's gonna free up some of the reserves, some, I'm sorry, some of the general fund budget. So that's where, so if, if step one, buying, spending the reserve down is agreeable, let's, let's talk a little bit about what we can do with the general fund budget. Well, first, you know, I talked about, we're about one hundred thirty-six thousand dollars in the red, so we can kind of say, we're, we're much more comfortable with that, so, you know, that's basically a wash, we don't have to worry about that. But also, the department heads, at, everybody asked for some additional staffing. And again, three-year plan, so not necessarily, some of these things we're talking about for two thousand twenty-two, some of them are the years ahead. You know, as the city grows, we are, whether we like it or not, and I don't mean that in a bad way, but as our city grows, and we, I know, earlier in the summer, we, I know we talked about at least one subdivision, uh, and the other things have been talked about, too, you know, we will need more staff to provide those services to the citizens and to the business that are coming to our community. Some other things, we have talked about this summer, the old city hall, you know, we need to, we need to do something with it. Currently, it's twenty-five thousand dollars that we have to spend just as it sits. And again, we talked about this early in the summer, but we probably need to do something with it. Some other things, park improvements, you know, earlier, we talked about different things that we're doing. Navy Park wants some more love, Northway wants some more love, the Cove Recreation Area, you know, I just kind of threw that name out there like that, but we, we, a big win for the city is we demoed the Cove School. Well, now we got a nice piece of property sitting there, and again, we can't just let it sit there, we gotta at least mow the grass, you know? Kelvin and I talked about putting a fence around it, so we kind of keep people out from using it as a depository for unwanted goods. But, you know, I'm like, man, what, instead of building a fence around it, what if we did something else? But again, that's a want, not necessarily a need right now, but, but all of those. So again, not just limited to those three parks, and then keep orange appealing, I got that from the mayor, but that's beautification efforts, that could be, again, that's just an umbrella of things we do.
You like that?
Demolition.
He actually didn't spell it right. The peel is supposed to be P E E, P E A L. Keep orange appealing.
That's, yeah, well, see, I look at it two ways. One, we wanna make it attractive to people, but also, as you peel it, you get to, to the fruit when you get down in there.
Yeah.
So. So anyway.
See, now just going after a pearl version.
Gotcha.
But anyway, that's, uh, that is an umbrella of beautification efforts such as demolitions, such as litter force, such as, um, spending money for our grapple trucks to work some overtime, such as anything else, media outreach that mayor and I kind of talked about a little bit. So any of those umbrella of ideas, that could fall in there. You know, I didn't even notice the cool little logo that Hillary made, see the orange and the T X? I like that. Uh, also, so moving forward, uh, you know, something else we could do is anytime we increase a reduction, I keep thinking I'm gonna say my words incorrectly, but reduce the inter-department transfer from the water and sewer to the general fund. If we reduce that, we could, uh, potentially reduce the utility rate increasing. I think we still need to go with that and still have a gradual increase, but we could reduce that some. We could hire that additional utility worker that, uh, Jim Wolf asked for. Again, we can continue to get generators, support our infrastructure, we can demolition an old school, again, any kind of demolitions or any of those things, mowing, any of those things. Now, keep in mind, we're still negotiating with police and fire for new CBAs, and we're meeting with those two groups independently, one on Thursday and one on Friday, so to say, we have X amount of dollars after we buy those patrol vehicles or, or any of those things, you know, I can't say. But kind of for the three-year plan, uh, the staff and I need some of y'all's input, and then later in the week, we need to meet with the police and fire, and then we need to come forward during the budget process like we have been talking about. So again, as I mentioned a second ago, if, if we are agreeable to the three-year plan, this time next year, that five hundred thousand dollars, if you will, it'll all be, be built into the budget and those kind of items identified. But also, just keep in mind, year one, year two, something happens, we can certainly adjust year three or whatever year we need to. But with that, kind of wanna get y'all's input about spending out in the reserve. But with that, kind of want to get y'all's input about spending out in the reserve.
I think, uh, I mean, I'll go first. I think that it's wonderful. Um, one of the things that we've talked about for the last two years, um, I've always tried to give a direction at the beginning of the year, after praying and asking the Lord, where should we go? And, and the main thing that you spoke about was, uh, to, to finish what we started. Um, we've had so many large projects and new things happening here. Uh, we can't continue to just chase after these huge announcements without making sure that we're able to properly manage what God's already blessed us with. So, um, I think that this is a balanced budget. I know that there's going to be some things that other members want to talk about, to see about making possibly happen, but, um, I think this is right along with where we're needing to go. I think this three-year plan, um, is also going to help us, like you said, to allocate, move some funds around to make other things possible. So I, I really do appreciate you and staff working this hard because, um, I know it can't be easy, especially with COVID and everything else going on. So, um, I know we have more discussions, we have with three more meetings to go over this, three more or two more?
I'm going to look at Cheryl on our, uh, budget.
Is it two more after this one? Oh, so there's just one more after this one?
Yeah.
Okay. So, but I, I like where we're going, but of course, I'll let you, we'll start. You want to start with Mr. Birch?
Yeah, I like where we're going to. We're going to need to grow our departments, you know, we're going to need that.
Yeah, and that'll be a good thing, I think.
Absolutely.
I think what you've laid out is a smart way to do it. I like it.
You know, I, you know, I was going to say, uh, someone may say about the tax rate, if we lower the tax rate. Let's keep in mind, I guess, two things. I don't like taxes, you know, nobody, nobody likes taxes. We all like to keep our own money. I want to keep my own money. I don't want to give it to anybody else. Uh, I won't give it away the way I want to give it away, in, in stores and orange, so. Uh, but anyway, if we lower the tax rate, two, I have two main concerns. One, as the city grows and we need to provide services, we may not be able to increase it if we do. And also, if we lower the tax rate, the legislature is going to, they, they cap us how much it can go up. So if we did need to go up,
We'd be in trouble.
We're, we're limited to what we can. And then, I'm sorry, the third thing, the IDC contracts are tied to the tax rate. So as that decreases, the IDC contracts go down even more. And so if we're conservative and go slowly, you know, at the end of this plan, we still got all this money in the reserve? Maybe then we do look at lowering the tax rate. And, and you know, last year, I, I, we had in the budget a, uh, lower tax rate, a little, a little at a time. So again, just kind of when I, I had mentioned the tax rate in this plan, but kind of keep what we're doing and provide more services if we can.
You mentioned a while ago that we weren't going to increase taxes, that we were going to keep it.
Tax rate.
Yeah, tax rate.
That's right.
But then you said, because we have to list it as if we did, because that's what we have to do? Why do we have to list it that way?
So, well, the, the, the quick point is because the, the state legislator has required language. But, but again, it, it's just so everybody, anybody listening, I mean, your house, you know, your house, and again, just, I'm going to say a hundred thousand dollars because I can do that easily in my head, a hundred thousand dollar house, that's your appraised taxable value. Well, the next year, the appraisal district, not us, the appraisal district says, it's now worth a hundred and five thousand dollars. So a hundred times eight zero five nine is eight hundred and five dollars and nine cents. Eight hundred and five times that same rate is a little bit more. So while we didn't change the tax rate.
I just didn't understand the legislature part.
They make us put it in there.
I understand.
Yep. If it's one penny more, we're going to say we're going to. And so everybody yells at y'all and says, oh, Mike Kuntz told me we had to do that.
Well, the other good part about that too, I was talking with Ms. Mary right before the meeting started, is we've all been asking for growth and progress. And now that we have the growth and the progress, also comes the responsibility and accountability to make sure that we have enough people to properly provide water, sewer, uh, protection through the police department, fire, and so we have to make sure that we're prepared to keep all of that in order and, you know, so that's why, yes. Ms. McKenna, anything?
Um, what, what the mayor said, uh, you know, we were talking about growth. We always talk about growth, we want growth, but along with growth comes responsibility. Things aren't glitzy for some of that responsibility, a pump station. You know, a, a vehicle for the police, things like that, that people don't think about. Um, the sewer, the water, the things that we provide for them, the fire department, the police department. Those things aren't real glitzy a lot of times, but looking to them and looking to them in the future will grow our city. So I'm, I'm really glad that we are looking to the future and we are looking to growth.
And, and I'll say, again, thank you, we literally cannot grow without water and sewer.
Exactly.
Ms. Salter?
Uh, well, I agree. I agree with everything that everybody else has really said, you know? A lot, a lot of times, uh, residents, they don't really understand how everything works. And so it's our responsibility to make sure that they are taken care of. So I think you're doing a great job. I like that proposal.
Mr. Childs?
I do like how we finally hit your reserve number. You and I have talked about it the last two or three years.
I feel much better.
And, and I do know from the last town you're at, that you had recommended to start spending it down. And I like the fact that you're not going to try to spend it down in one year, you're going to take time and let, let us think it through, and so I appreciate that, but I'm, I'm ecstatic that we've hit that magic number you and I discussed for a long time.
Okay, Mr. Bailey?
Being a new kid on the block, I have a few questions.
Okay.
And, and I'm not singling anybody out, but it's going to look like it because I, the question I'm going to bring up, and I don't think anybody questioned where I stand on the police. I donated a few years of my life to it. Only six vehicles. The spending, the way you've got it all set up, excellent. And this is probably a, a question more towards the chief. Have you looked at maybe going to a mid-size?
I, I've asked, yeah, I've asked, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I've asked that question a couple of times. And, and currently, I think with what we have and suit our needs, that we're going to stick with the, the size vehicle that, that we have.
Okay, but well, in all fairness, and, uh, Major Robinson is, is a good friend of mine, he, he's a little bit shy on the price of Tahoe.
Also.
About six thousand dollar shy.
Well, yes, and, and again, keep in mind, the vehicles that we are going to replace, we're going to sell those. Some, some of these budget numbers have that built into it. But also, to be fair, we also have to talk about all the, you know, the, the cages and the lights. So to say, we're, I agree, if I could walk down and get a Tahoe for thirty-eight thousand dollars, Jill would be driving to Tahoe. Uh, but, so there's more to that number than just walking into the dealership and, and writing that check.
Get the lights, the boxes, replace the back page, it's about four or six thousand. I don't know if we own our own video. If we don't, you have to add another six thousand. So you're looking at about fifty-two thousand. And I, I, I've driven probably every, about every police car that you have. Those Tahos are nice, but they also drain gas like it's crazy. And the only thing that I, if we buy six Tahos, if you throw in just two or three or four small mid-size like City of Beaumont has, with the high output six cylinders, it gets about twenty-five miles a gallon running around the city. We get them more than what they're asking for now. You know, see, my, my point, uh, if we want to give them some extra, let's give them some extra. Let's cut down where he can be in a better position to rotate as they come. And instead of buying six Tahos, buy three Tahos and three mid-size. Or, well, if you buy just three, then you can probably buy four or five mid-size.
Well, one thing we've tried to do in, in this year, I don't think we can pursue it because of the availability. We have, you, you had noticed, and again, that about the leasing of vehicles. And so we have found it's economical that we can lease, uh, and it kind of depends, but say about three or four, but you can't just buy one outright. And so I think we are trying to find economical, uh, solutions for our, for our vehicles.
I, I wanted to talk about the leasing deal. Uh, I'm not a big proponent of that because the money that you put out, you never recoup. It's kind of like that other extra money we were talking about. You put it out one time, it's gone, it never comes back again, you have no return on it. Uh, I know they send patrol cars and trucks from maintenance and to, to, to the Austin. And I have seen, as long as they'll crank and they drive in there, the next police car draws about ten times what a pickup truck would. There's something about somebody buying an old police car. And, and you, you're leasing, that's money we're never going to see again. And I don't know how many, how many years do, are we able to put a, a vehicle on before they, we rotate them?
It's going to depend on the type of the vehicle that it is, and.
No, I'm talking about mileage, well, there's, there's got to be a deal.
Well, again, I, I say the same thing, and especially as you know, uh, that on the patrol vehicle, there's not going to be the mileage is that the, the real killers, the, the time that it's, uh, running, so.
But you don't have, there's no deal on the amount of mile you put on one?
Yes, there is. And again, that's managed through the Enterprise Fleet managed, they help us manage that so that when all our vehicles, when they hit a certain mileage and condition, that.
Okay, what's the mileage?
And again, it's so, I don't have that in front of me, but if you tell me which, I sure can.
Can you get that for me? I, I, I'm just asking, I'm a new kid on the block, and I'm looking to give as much as we can. If we're going to spend the reserve, I'm all for it. The way you set it up, I'm, I think it's outstanding. But if we can get him more and cut down on, on the type vehicles, why can't we get him some more? That one extra one he's looking for, that would be in that bunch right off the bat, first year. See what I'm, I'm getting at?
Yes, sir.
And, and I'm all for the Tahos, but they're gas hogs, and I know that there's mid-size that we could utilize on patrol in the City of Orange. And they run pretty fast, I mean, they get down the road. I'm just wanting to see, if we're going to give, spend this money, give it as much as we can. That's all I'm, I'm asking.
That's what we want to.
Okay, well, maybe we can get, get there.
I, I think we can.
Okay, well, thank you. And again, compliments, outstanding. I'm done.
Hey, man, guess what it is, what we're here for. So, uh, now that you've made your presentation, is, or do we like any comments from the team?
Sure, sure.
So it's an open, this is, uh, you guys are the people, you're who we work for, for, not for.
We are, we are in South East Texas.
That's what I got from South East Texas, work for. But if anybody would like to address council, please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Now, earlier today, they all said they wanted y'all to buy me a Jeep.
Yeah. Well, I know that there's some people who are here, like, I know that, uh, Ms. Tiffany Brown, she's a good friend of mine. She's here on behalf of OYBS, and I believe you're the new president. So there's one item on the agenda, talking about twenty-five thousand to move a fence back and things like that. But I do know, in, in speaking with their group, that, uh, they're going to come to us, maybe at a later time, to make a presentation on how we as a council and city can move forward to continue to improve, uh, the baseball fields and softball fields, sorry. I don't want to get in trouble. One's baseball, one's softball. But those, those are the things, like, you know, improving things for our kids, which twenty-five thousand's already in there for this year. But, um, I didn't know if y'all had anything y'all wanted to say, or? Yes, sir, sorry. It's okay, just three minutes.
My name's Brent Richard, I'm the new president of OYBS. Uh, what else do I got to say?
You're Andrea's, you're fine, go ahead.
I live, I live in the county, but, uh, my question is, the twenty-five thousand is to move the fence. Can we allocate that for other things in the park besides moving the fence? As far as it got to be moving the fence since it's projected or proposed?
So James Lawrence, you may or may not know him, I know Ms. Tiffany knows him, uh, you know, again, I think whether it's your predecessor or someone, you know, they talked about a variety of things. Because again, I asked James, I said, what do they want? Give me some ideas, you know? Got a bunch of them on there, to, to everybody's credit. So it's kind of like, yeah, that's one we can afford. And again, so do we necessarily have to do it for that? I mean, again, that'd be, we'd kind of have to come to council because that was a capital outlay thing, but if they're receptive to that, to, to move it, you know?
Instead of using it at the park, but just instead of moving the fence, something that's going to benefit the kids.
Go ahead.
So, you know, if, if, if the board would get with James and he, and, you know, kind of come up with an idea, then let James pitch it to me to pitch to them.
Yeah, I was cur, I was curious, uh, like, what, some of the things that you are wanting?
Like, uh, one of the things is to get some of our scoreboards fixed. We got four of the eight scoreboard, no, four of the seven scoreboards are not working right now because of hurricane damage. Uh, some of our buildings rolled and pulled wires out from under the ground. Uh, no?
What did you say?
Oh, yeah, we had some.
Some dugouts?
Some dugout issues too.
Do you know about how much those scoreboards cost each?
To fix them or what they cost?
To fix them or replace them?
It depends on the repairs. So the guy was supposed to come out next week to give us an estimate on the repairs of the scoreboards. But I know one of them would have to go to like a wireless controller, he's got to do away with the underground wiring because it's ate up and pulled underground, or run it, hold new wire.
Okay.
Try to look into both, whether it's replacing and, and repair. Because sometimes it's, it's just easier to replace some things than to just to repair it, you know?
So, um, I had a list, but I didn't bring it with me.
It's all right, we'll get with you, we'll get with you.
Yeah.
This is Memorial Field.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Superstar? All right, well, anything else, Mr. Kuntz, from staff or?
That, that's kind of it. Like I said, uh, you know, just like I made an offer, uh, last week, still the offer's out there, and you know, ask Mr. Bailey to come by, give us an appointment because Cheryl's real busy. But, you know, if you have time, come by and visit with some of these things, Thursday and Friday aren't good for me or Jay. So, you know, that may have to be later in the afternoon, but y'all got any questions, pick it up. And I'll reiterate, I'm not going to look at anybody because I know Cheryl will be eyeballing me, but, because I asked, I ask the same question every year, or what I think's dumb questions. But if you got that question, somebody else has the same one. So come by, we'd love to talk to you about it, so. You know, like I said, shoot me a text, call, email, we'll try to answer it. You know, even if it's just like, hey, what about this instead of that, you know?
Gotcha.
And again, if y'all want to give me that Jeep, I'll go.
Well, before we close, I do want to thank everybody for coming out, um, and for listening. This is the first, um, presentation of the budget, of the proposed budget. It's not finalized yet. The word proposed is the special word of the day. Uh, but we do sincerely appreciate staff for turning in their wants and needs. And then we appreciate Mr. Kuntz and Ms. Zito and those involved for trying to help us get us to where we need to be. And I just do continue to, uh, I'm, I'm dead set on always letting people know, we put God first here. And I think that we're moving in the right direction, so thank you. And with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Beg it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion approves, meeting is adjourned, thank you.